Good evening, everyone. We'll start off this evening with our public hearings. The first one is the Green Belt Ordinance Amendment.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 7.5, Article 4 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, the Charleston County Green Belt Bank Ordinance.
We have Anthony G. Bryant signed up to speak.
Let me hear again. Anthony G. Bryant, President Bryant Group, Inc., Public Policy and Land Use Consultants. I reestablish my concern, and definitely I'm here to talk about the budget. I want the discretion of the chairman, because I want to, I don't want to speak on every last item, but if I can get this in, speak to the overall budget, I'd appreciate that and interest of time. Thank you. Well, the reason I'm here is why I'm here all the time is for getting a clear understanding of what is financial and behavioral controls. With all the debt entities you have separate, some have their own subcommittees, some have their own general councils. They have a lot of moving parts. So my position is for those who are in business, those who have minority-owned businesses, which I think you've done an outstanding job in that area, to make sure that we have as much access as possible to information via notice. I had a meeting today with a great man in our community and talking about notice. In terms of our young people, we have people work with Title I schools, who work in Section 8 programs, in the Schedule I drug situation we're talking about. In terms of abiding truth and consequences, meaning to give out short legal descriptions and to give information to our young people to figure out the consequences of their behavior. That's the least we can do in this budget, is to look at every aspect of the notice process that you have before procedure. So therefore, when you finish this budget, it goes to the Administration of Education Act, it goes to South Carolina Administration and Government, so it goes to all these folks here, to release all the money to them. The real critical question is, is each one of them concerned about fair notice? That's my concern. Are they concerned about providing fair notice in every aspect of this budget? That's my only concern moving forward, is fair notice. After the fair notice, we can't solve no real problems. And so I want to thank the body for giving me the opportunity to be there with you today. I'm gonna sit down. I want, like in the letter I gave you, I gave you a letter, attached to each one of my budget comments, that'd be in that letter. And lastly, too, how can you have an ordinance? Now, the governor's made a statement in terms of what happened on Isle of Palms. Now, frankly, you had no assembly ordinance. There was no assembly ordinance whatsoever. So there's no notice provided to the students that were out there. So the question, how can you proceed on someone without notice? How can you proceed on someone without a clear policy or an ordinance? How can you do that? How can a governor, you, or anybody without an ordinance, say they're something inappropriate? And by and large, many of them were African-American young people on Saturday. So they went, they went cut to school, it was the weekend. So therefore, let's clear that up, too, as far as providing our students this summer with all notices they need. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Any others? Any others?
That's it for that. Okay. Notice is hereby, we do have a lot of more public hearings, just not, no more speakers for that one?
Portago.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing prior to authorizing the authorization and execution of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County, Protigo USA, and Landmark Enterprises Incorporated, formerly known as Project Platypus.
Mr. Bryant had signed up for all of them, but I see that he's left, so I guess that was his comment for all of the public hearings.
Nobody else? Thank you. Next one, FY24 County Budget.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 6:30 PM on the operating budget ordinances for fiscal year 2024 for Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission, Cooper River Parks and Playground, North Charleston District, St. Andrews Parks and Playground Commission, St. John's Fire District, and St. Paul's Fire District.
No one to speak on that one. Thank you. Next one, FY24 Solid Waste Recycling and Disposal Fees.
Notice is hereby given that the County Council of Charleston County, South Carolina, will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments on the adoption of a budget for the operation and maintenance of solid waste disposal and resource recovery system.
Thank you, ma'am. Next one, County Fee Ordinance Amendment.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the portion of Charleston County Code of Ordinances, Section 2-137 pertaining to fees in the Environmental Management Department.
Do it in a minute. FY24 Special Purpose Districts Budgets.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, on the operating budget ordinances for fiscal year 2024 for Charleston County.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, regular public comments. Do we have anybody for those?
Yes, we have four people signed up. The first person's Lynn Mazel, followed by Tiffany Mazel.
Hello. To start off with, I don't appreciate being called a liar or being lied to by a county council member. I have put in numerous requests for the ditch on our street to be cleaned. I was told a couple of weeks ago that the ditch on our street has been taken care of more than any other ditch in Charleston County. Why did they clean a state ditch a couple of years ago and refuse to clean our ditch on a Charleston County road? The house where they cleaned the ditch at, that's a state ditch. I have pictures if y'all need them. It has a for sale sign on it. I have put in numerous requests for mosquito control. They don't even go down our whole road. They come in too fast to do any good. I have an email from Nikki at mosquitocontrol that says the type of mosquitoes we have have to be sprayed at a certain time, instead of the time when we know, we physically know these mosquitoes are out. They want to come out there at four or five o'clock in the morning. Hey, they done fed on us by then. So it's no need. This has happened more than once. They come in around four or five. They don't do any good. We have black ones of various sizes, some that buzz, some that don't. We also have large brown ones that sting to the bone. It has been several weeks since they sprayed our area. They used to do the entire circle driveway on my property. They no longer do that. They don't even do my entire road. I am not convinced they do the street directly behind our road when they're out in this area anymore. I have a six-year-old Yorkie, hoping to prey on y'all's hearts. She, when I got her five years ago, she had a grade four heart murmur. Now she is in congestive heart failure. She will not survive heartworms. Yes, I have her on Heart Guard. I give it to her every month. She won't survive this. Humans are dying from mosquito bites. Our animals are dying because of mosquito bites. They refuse to do-
Mr. Chairman, did she give her address?
I was gonna ask, yeah, address.
Your address, ma'am?
R5. I live on Davis Road in Ravenille. I've made numerous phone calls to Bill Tooten. He refuses to answer my call, return my call. I mean, what good is he? Jennifer Miller, when you called her, I promise you, if you didn't talk to her within the hour, she called you. She listened to residents. Bill Tooten does not listen. If he's not, he's not there for us, why is he in that seat?
Tiffany Mazel, followed by Fred Brown.
Hold on, Mr. Pryor.
You reference a council member that didn't respond to you?
The council member?
Lied to you or something like that?
Yes, sir. Joe. He called me just a couple of weeks ago.
Sure did.
Yeah. His words were, "One of us is lying, and it's not me."
Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to comment tonight, and I'm not supposed to, but I would reference the document you have before you, and I'll leave it to your discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you. We have made numerous trips, 18, 18 trips in 2022, and five already in 2023.
Spray for mosquitoes is what you're telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
If you only come, here's my house. If you only come right to my house, it's not going to do any good. They come in so fast. I want those people's sleep is overrated, okay? I stay up all night long until mosquito control comes through. My husband gets up to go to work at five o'clock. I'm just going to bed, and I'm back up by seven, 7:30. Sleep's overrated. But if we're not getting any help, what are they good for? They have nine trucks. How many trucks are they running a night now?
They run them a lot. I hear them, I hear them in my neighborhood.
What area is that?
I live in Mount Pleasant.
Y'all being taken care of. I monitor it. I monitor that thing.
Well, they usually have it online. You can see where they're gonna spray.
Yeah, I monitor it.
So.
Would you like to see how many requests I've put in? They haven't been to us in several weeks. I was told they can only spray so often. They did see one downtown last week, three times in a week.
I'll take a look at that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Let's get these trucks rolling. I don't want to die from a mosquito bite, and I sure don't want my fur baby to.
I don't want anybody to die from a mosquito bite. Thank you. Mr. Darby?
I would just suggest, sir, I mean evidently she has a concern, and what we can do, can someone just speak to her one-on-one, and I'm quite sure Mr. Armstrong would follow through, just to reassure the citizen that something will be done. I think that's where we go from here.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Darby. Mr. Armstrong, would you speak with Ms. Mazel? I appreciate that. All right?
You want to see my city butt? It has snakes in it. Mosquitoes are growing in it. We have two culverts on our road. What's growing in there? Mosquitoes. We have a big ditch behind my house. They call a canal, but it's not. It's a ditch. What's back there? Mosquitoes. And when it gets finished, when the water, the rain, it runs up there and it sits on land, what's growing in there? Mosquitoes.
Thank you, ma'am. Let Mr., would you speak with Mr. Armstrong, and we'll find out. We'll go from there. Thank you very much. He's right here.
Tiffany Mazel.
Right here up front.
That's my daughter. I can take up for her if you want me to.
No. That's next.
Is she?
He will come to you.
Is she here?
I spoke fast enough, so she didn't have to take the rest of the money.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown?
This is the guy that's been killing me. Sheriff.
Afternoon. I'm Red Brown Jr. I reside at 2946 Highway 17 North in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I'm here again this afternoon, speaking to the council board as a whole, and I'm requesting that the Charleston County members, as a whole, identify the problem. Me and the community sign these signatures here, complaining about the noise ordinance that you all passed just a month ago or two, and this noise ordinance have not been enforced with the deputy of Charleston County Police. So we, as a community, we are asking the community, and now we're recommending that the council board, as a whole, may address this need of the situation by having Chef Christine herself personally to be addressed concerning this noise and the deputies not having what they need. They are quick to abate the situation, which is the decibel meter, and neither one of them have them. They come to my homes regularly, and when they do, they arrive and said they don't know what is accessible. They don't know what is unreasonable. Here is the ordinance you all passed, and it's requiring that the deputies have them today so that they can monitor these sounds that we hearing and the music coming from this nightclub. So as we requested, we hope that the council members, as a whole, would address this show and have her, because the chef had her chief call me a week ago, Chief Fletcher King, call me personally, telling me to tell you all to get your code enforcers to have them equipped with these decibels, and they'll back them up. So we are telling you all that actually, as a community, the chef department is ignoring us and getting the decibel that y'all worked so hard to put this together to abate the situation, and we are not getting a response back from the chef department at all, as far as addressing her deputies with them.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? Any more? That's it? All right.
That is very concerning. I'm sorry. No, that's-
Is it possible that we can get his concern and find out what could be done, as opposed to his leaving and not having anything said?
We, I have spoken with the sheriff. He lives off of Highway 17, near Highway 41 in Mount Pleasant, and I have spoken with the sheriff and with the chief, and we're kind of at an impasse about this. And the sheriff, the sheriff, the sheriff tells me that they go and the noise is not loud enough to be, to be recorded. And so we're kind of at an impasse here now. Code enforcement, our code enforcement people probably aren't out there at nine o'clock at night, or at 10 o'clock at night, when the restaurant is open. And I think that what we'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll give, I'll give the sheriff a call, and we'll talk to her again and see what more we can do about it. But they've, the sheriff tells me that they've had numerous people out there, and it's not, it's not loud enough to register. It's not loud enough. That's what she tells me.
Mr. Chair, I thought I heard the gentleman say that they did not even have the equipment necessary to measure the deci-, I remember us waiting on Mount Pleasant to pass their noise ordinance, whatever, so that we might be able to make certain that ours was not under theirs or whatever the case was. And so I remember that specifically, and I remember them coming. And now, when calling the sheriff, if they don't come with any sort of measurable tool, and they're saying that our code enforcers who don't work at that hour possess those tools, then what can be done to make certain that the sheriff's department is equipped?
Well, the sheriff tells me that everybody's cell phone has a decibel meter on it. Now, I don't know that. I've never used one. I don't know. And they've checked it that way, but I can't verify that. Mine may have one on it. I don't know. But I will, I will look, I'll talk to the sheriff and see where, if there's anything further we can do about that.
The punch, Mr. Chairman, is that regardless if you have a decibel meter or not, that when officers come out, you can hear the jook and jamming going on at the club, right there from the person's house who's calling. And so if it's disturbing enough for them to call, why would they not then-
The sheriff?
Yeah, go over-
The deputies say it's not, it's not that loud.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've had this conversation with Sheriff Graziano. Showed her on my phone. I had the decibel meter. Her officers do have it. It works. And I can only imagine that they pull the phone out, they hold it up, and if it doesn't register beyond the numerical value that we put in that ordinance, they, they can't go forward and take any action. So I'm not saying what is or isn't going on, but I do know they're aware of it, and they do have the means.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know a better, I don't know another way to resolve this. I will, I will speak to the sheriff and see if there's any other thing we can do about it.
The gentleman said he had a petition with signatures. It would be interesting to know how many members of the community also find this to be problematic. Have you turned those signatures over to the sheriff's or to department or to us? I mean, who's seen that petition? Who has seen that petition with the names of-
I told Mr. SASS about it several times.
A copy?
I never gave a copy, but I told him, and I showed it to him that it had the names besides me complaining, and most of them are older than I am. They're not accustomed to you, but police officers are calling him out all the time at night because of law abuse. So I said, I think I am trying my best to get this resolved for them, along with this signature.
Mr. Brown, can you give us a copy of the petition?
At least that maybe something to use in conversations with her, you know, so she can tangibly and empirically see that these people are disturbed and bothered, and something needs to be done.
We'll get the petition, and we'll check it out. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Darby?
As a regular citizen, and I still live in the same metaphysical poverty-stricken community which I was born by choice, and one of the problems is that government does not have dialogue with the citizens. It would be most appreciative if the sheriff or any of the sheriff department representatives would go speak to the community as a whole, or for those persons who sign, as opposed to just suggesting to the sheriff, this is the problem. There needs to be a type of dialogue. That would be my suggestion, sir. At least talk to the residents, sir.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Darby.
One question, Mr. Chairman. Is this music outside or is inside coming out, or do they have speakers on the outside? Do they have speakers on the outside, or the noise is just coming through the wall because it's that loud?
I've had officer came to my house many times. I got recordings of them on recordings, hearing the music and admitting they're hearing.
I understand, but what I'm asking you, are they having an outside party? That's why the noise is so loud?
Whether they have karaoke's, live bands.
Is it on the outside or the-
Outside, outside.
That's clearly in the lines of problem.
Outside, and I'm two blocks away.
Right.
Seven nights a week to two o'clock in the morning.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we need to look and see, are they licensed to have outside events?
I just found out from SLED the other day, they just got their liquor beverage license last year in August. So actually, they've been in business three years without permit with alcohol and beverage. Actually, the planning board just gave them a permit a year ago just to have to operate the business for being there. They've been there two years without permit.
My concern would be, Mr. Chairman, if we can find out through our business license department, are they licensed to have outdoor events? If not, then we can cite them for having outdoor events.
Mr. Chair, if I may also add, having been on the Board of Zoning Appeals, they would have had to get a special exception from the BZA. If there are three validated complaints made to the planner, they can have that special exception revoked and lose the ability to do it. So that's another means of enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other speakers?
She said that was the last one, I believe.
Okay. All right, Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted. Agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in the prayer?
Sure.
And Mr. Tooten, would you lead us in the pledge?
This is the day that the Lord has made. Let us be glad and rejoice in it. Let's start with a moment of silence, please, for Charleston Nine and the Emmanuel Nine Remembrance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing this group of public servants here. We thank you more for our dedicated staff that helps drive this county government. We thank you for the citizens that come and participate in this process. We ask that you bless us in our decision-making, that it's what's best for this county and what's best for our associates. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of May 30. Seconded, do I hear a second on the minutes?
Second.
Mr. Moody, thank you. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Recognitions and resolutions?
Move to approve.
Same.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bayud and staff to receive recognition. We have for our Class II CRS rating. Would you guys come, would y'all come forward?
Mr. Chairman, we're happy to recognize tonight the employees from our Flood Plane Management Division. Charleston County has received a Class II score for its voluntary participation in the Community Rating System program. Participation in the CRS through the National Flood Insurance Program allows residents to receive greater discounts on their flood insurance premiums. In total, residents in unincorporated Charleston County will save about $5.2 million a year, based on our employees' hard work. And not only does the participation in the CRS save citizens money on their flood insurance premium, but it also enhances public safety, reduces damage from flooding, and promotes environmental protection. Charleston County was previously considered a Class III community, which meant a 35% discount on flood insurance, and the Class II rating brings the discount up to 40%. Charleston County is the number one coastal community in the nation by class score and size.
Thank you all.
That's really incredible.
Each one of y'all.
Praise God.
It's really incredible, it's really incredible what y'all have done. That saves everybody a tremendous amount of money. But the biggest thing you do is you put pressure on the other municipalities to get theirs down. That's the biggest thing you do. Absolutely. So thank you.
I want to take just one second.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It feels good. It feels good to be acknowledged by the council twice, twice in the last month, right? I don't know about you, how you feel. But it feels good. I just want to thank you so much for the hard work. I think we did our duty. We still have to achieve last one. I'm taking on that, yes. However, I just want to say thank you for the teamwork, thank you for the hard work, and I want to thank the teamwork, to include letting it go in and stormwater division. Without their help, without their participation, we will not achieve this. And we are number one so far, and we strive to stay number one nationwide, based on the size and the policy numbers. Thank you so much again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add a resolution honoring Hollywood Mayor John Dunmire to the agenda by unanimous consent.
Are there any objections to adding this by unanimous consent? Hearing none. Mr. Boykin, would you make the motion?
Yes, sir. I move to direct the clerk of council to prepare a resolution honoring Hollywood Mayor John Dunmire to be presented to him at his last meeting as mayor on June 26, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
So thanks seconded by Mr. Moody. Thank you all very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let the record show, it was a nine, nine-zero vote. All in favor. Item number four.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve 4A through 4F.
Second.
Yeah, it is. And let's do the first one. Let's do amend the Green Belt Ordinance first.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7.5, Article 4 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, the Charleston County Green Belt Bank Ordinance, number 1424 as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On item 4B, we have a, we have a slight change. I would move to amend the ordinance by replacing the codename Project Platypus with the name of the company's Protigo USA Incorporated and Landmark Enterprises Incorporated.
Is that a second, Mr. Pryor? Thank you. Moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Mr. Pryor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County, Protigo USA Incorporated, a South Carolina corporation, and Landmark Enterprises Incorporated, a South Carolina corporation, collectively previously identified by the county as Project Platypus, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with the company, providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes paid by the company under the agreement for the establishment of multi-county industrial- the company under the agreement for the establishment of multi-county industrial business park and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you.
On full seat of FY '24 county budget, I'd like to amend the budget due to the newly identified savings for workers' compensation premiums. I propose approval of the county's budget with the amendment to reduce workers' compensation revenues and premiums by $250,000, increase community investment by $250,000, and reduce the fringe medical costs by $250,000 in the general fund. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Moody? Moved by Mr. Pryor. Oh, I'm sorry. Moved by Mr. Pryor. Seconded by Mr. Middleton.
We have the same spirit.
Excuse my ignorance, but I, I don't know what I'm voting on. What is this?
The budget.
Obviously, yes, chairman. The chairman of the amendment, man. What are you saying?
Workman's comp.
We usually have money set aside in the budget for the community investment partners where they can apply up to $10,000 apiece, and so we reinstate this back into the budget because it was taken out.
All right. The discussion, I'm in favor of the budget without that, so I'm being record, I'm in favor of the budget with no tax increase, but respectfully not in favor of putting back in what we voted out last time.
Okay.
That's why.
So that vote would have been eight to one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Salisbury?
An ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024, herein after referred to as fiscal year 2024, making appropriations from the general fund and other funds of Charleston County for such purposes and further providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County, including the On Don McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College for fiscal year 2024, providing for appropriations from such special funds created for the purposes of the On Don McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College in order to supply the necessary functions of the units, providing for budget control of the appropriations by the Charleston County Council and the county administrator, making provisions for the fiscal affairs of the Charleston County, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to $50 million for Charleston County and up to $1 million for the On Don McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Ma'am, solid waste recycling disposal fee?
An ordinance relating to the imposition of annual solid waste recycling and disposal fees for the disposition of solid waste and recycling, providing for classifications of real property subject to annual solid waste recycling and disposal fees, and establishing the amount of the annual solid waste recycling and disposal fees. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Special purpose districts budgets.
An ordinance approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024, directing the auditor of Charleston County to levy the necessary millage and the treasurer to collect taxes for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, the Cooper River Park and Playground Commission, the North Charleston District, the St. Andrews Parish Parks and Playground Commission, the St. John's Fire District, and the St. Paul's Fire District, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to $3 million for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, up to $1,100,000 for the St. Andrews Parks and Playground Commission, and up to $1,500,000 for the St. John's Fire District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
4F, county fee ordinance amendment?
An ordinance amending those portions of Charleston County Code, Section 2-137, dealing with fees in the solid waste department. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Vote for approval 5A through E.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, move to approve item 6A through D.
Second.
Moved by Mr., excuse me, by Reverend Middleton and seconded by Mr. Pryor. 6A, B, C, and D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Move for approval, item 7, 8 through I.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Reverend Middleton? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Council comments? Mr. Warman?
Not much today, Mr. Chairman. I certainly would thank staff and all the folks who work so hard on the budget. Always good to get that, get that taken care of, and I know it's a huge task for a number of folks. Certainly a lot of remembrances over the past week with the Charleston Nine and the Emmanuel Nine, as Mr. Moody noted. And also wanted to, of course, wish a sort of happy Juneteenth belatedly. I know that that is, you know, now a, somewhat recently, a county holiday, and glad to see that as a point of progress, and was glad to have the day off as well. So thanks to all, and again, yeah, that would be all today.
Thank you. Mr. Pryor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I concur with Mr. Warman. Thank you to Mr. Tooten and his staff for this year's budget, as well as you, Mr. Chairman. This is your first budget, and it all went without a millage increase. But I would like to ask staff to give us an update on 995 Morrison, on the, the, Mrs. Honeycutt, the people that we hired to bring us back, you know, some information, they were supposed to bring us back a proposal since, I think it was last year sometime, I think either Jan, December or January, and so I'd like to see where they at, what a recommendation the council, Mr. Tooten, if you can have them, you know, to tell us where they at and what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boykin?
I just want to, again, follow up on, this time of year takes me back in my career as an ATF agent. I've responded to the Emmanuel Nine and the Charleston Nine, and so, you know, this is always a solemn time of year for me, and I'm glad we're all recognizing it was, you know, both events were tragic and we should never forget. Thank you.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Yeah, thank you so much to our finance team. I also wanted to mention that I attended the masterclass on Thursday featuring Steve Pemberton, the county hosted, and just want to put out there, he has an incredible story of triumph over some really tragic circumstances. He's the one that authored their book, I believe it's called "Without a Chance," which he gleaned from his DSS file when he was placed in foster care from someone who didn't think he would have a chance in the world. And so thank you for bringing him, and I hope all the county employees will go back and listen to his presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Middleton, Reverend Middleton?
Along with all of the other comments that have already been made, certainly lifting up the Charleston Nine, remembering the Emmanuel Nine, I was certainly there, you know, that night in a very transformative way that changed my life, certainly to this day, and definitely celebrating Juneteenth, recognizing that when freedom came, you know, to those who were emancipated, it took a couple of additional years, you know, for the word to get out to those who were in Galveston, Texas, and it's just not endemic to Galveston, but it becomes a larger issue to make certain that we never repeat those kind of atrocities again by enslaving people or keeping them captive to enrich those who are enslaving them. And so thank you again. I think this has been an outstanding year of productivity, in my, in my humble opinion, and, and as we go through these next few months, I really hope that we can continue along these same paths.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. SASS. I'll be the curmudgeon in the, in the gang, but I did want to thank Mr. Tooten and especially Mr. Guile and Mrs. Altonhein for their, their great work on this budget. Mac looks like he could use a few days off, so I would encourage the administrator to look into that, but we don't have a millage increase, which is great news. Our employees got long overdue substantial pay raises, which is also a big deal. But we also have got to start paying attention to the growth in our general fund expenditures going from 245 to 275 now to 307. That is unsustainable unless you're talking about a tax increase, which I'm not going to be supporting. So, Mr. Tooten, your group, I think, for the most part has held the line. Some of the electeds, the appointed, the budgets are just getting out of control. They really are, and we got to figure out a way to get it reined in or we're going to have some problems. But again, pay raises are big, no millage rate, no millage increase is big, and that's, that's great news. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Darby?
Just three points, sir. Number one is I'm going to ask Mr. Moody to join the ministerial alliance.
He almost certified me.
And I'm going to ask Mrs. Honeycutt to join me on the, one of these human shows such as Carson, you know, nighttime. That was a good joke, man. I really liked, that was a good one. That was a good one, man. On the budget, Mr. Darby. Okay, thank you very much. On the third point, I echo the sentiments of Mr. Warman, Mr. Boykin, Reverend Middleton. I never thought that it was going to be a holiday. As a matter of fact, I thought it was going to be relegated to those African-Americans in Texas, because the first of January to me is perhaps the greatest of all days in the annals of American history. I know many would disagree, and even though Abraham Lincoln is not my favorite president, that belongs to President Lyndon Baines Johnson. But we do appreciate it, the holidays, and we can say what we want to say about America. But I must say, these are times that my mother, father, grandparents did not see, and whatever we say about America, we often can list bad things about her, but when she sees the error of her ways, she does make change. Even though she may take two steps forwards or one step backwards, she still is on the move of having the brotherhood of man. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kabrowski?
Well, there's a few things to echo the previous comments and as eloquently said[1616.26]